Change a little bit, so giving myself a brief question.
Hey, that's basically fifty percent.
I know.
Yeah, I'm sure you're. My wife didn't know you were pregnant, and she's like, hey, dinner, pregnant?
It's pretty close to it. We'll say you got it.
Almost do.
I was the same.
You've never said. You're on the other side of the curve there. Well, she didn't see it for a long time, because she saw you at the restaurant yesterday.
Oh, yeah, at Tessa Mariachi. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think she's about due.
Monday, Monday.
Monday?
Uh-huh, Monday.
Oh, my gosh. That went fast, that last one.
It did go really fast.
Yeah.
Yeah, especially this last one. I feel like it was, like, every day it went really fast. In fact, last night I was, like, trying to help cut the boys' fingernails in the bathtub, and I was like, I might send myself into labor if I don't make a break.
Just like a little baby baby spider.
Yeah. Farm, right?
Salt.
Yes.
Wasn't like a kid.
It's so big, it's so hard. Rudy had the best day ever. He said he was gonna hate it. Then just called me two seconds ago and said it was the worst day ever he's ever had. I'm like, okay, awesome. Second child.
It's always that second child.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah. He told me his teacher was mean. She's like the nicest lady he's ever met.
All teachers are.
All teachers are. On that first day, they gotta set a standard, man.
She's like, she's so strict. I'm like, I'm sure.
They gotta set precedence that first day. Well, you guys are, like, with it, aren't you? It is now one o'clock. Time for our regularly scheduled business meeting. Madam Clerk, is there a quorum?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, today it is my turn to do the pledge of allegiance and the invocation. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all the rain we continue to receive. We are grateful for every drop that we receive. We pray for those in Maui and other places who have been, you know, impacted by wildfires and other natural disasters. We pray for our first responders to keep them safe, and we also ask for your blessings during our meeting today. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Next up is approval of the minutes. Are there any changes or corrections that need to be made?
No.
Okay. Now it is time for a public comment. This is an opportunity for those of you in the audience to talk about anything that is not on the agenda. You'll have five minutes, and if you do come up, please state your name. All right, great, thank you.
Item 6A, the governing body has asked to consider a request from Dominique Morales for a waiver of the noise ordinance on Saturday, September 2nd, 2023, from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. for a wedding reception at 724 Sinner Street. I don't know if anybody's gonna present this, but as the commission may know, some time ago, the commission, with an agenda packed full of requests to exceed the noise waiver, granted the city manager authorization to consider those requests up to 11:00 p.m. and if it met other special event request requirements that I can grant a waiver on behalf of the commission up until 11:00 p.m. Requests beyond that the governing body wished to see themselves. So this one is before you requesting 2:00 a.m. And you did have a correspondence from a resident that sent, representing, they were a neighbor to this address and did not mind the 2:00 a.m. stop time versus the 11:00 p.m. stop time.
Have you heard from any other neighbors or any feedback?
And I think in previous request, I don't think the commission has allowed anything past midnight, if I remember correctly from previous votes on items like this.
I don't have that information in front of me, but my memory is the same. Midnight's usually been the breakpoint. A lot of those are commercial establishments, too, who are making those requests. They may have a band in or something of that nature. And I don't know if there's a representative, if Mr. Morales or any neighbors here and wants to speak to it, you're more than welcome to come up. Otherwise, that's the extent of the presentation.
All right.
Yeah, when we're talking about this, you can't have a gathering till 2:00. It's just you can't exceed noise levels until 2:00.
Yeah, wouldn't be a shutdown, particularly aimed at amplifying music and that type of thing.
And this isn't a pretty residential part of the city, right?
Yes.
I mean, it's Sinner Street, so.
Yep, Sinner Street, Las Vegas place in that area.
I think I can make a motion to just, I mean, if they would allow or would accept that, just accept a waiver until midnight, from 4:00 to midnight. So that would be my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item B, the governing body has asked to consider and allow the mayor to proclaim August 22nd, 2023, as Dr. Edward Mansoing Day.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we will read this at a later date.
If we're ready for a report of the city manager, you've got some staff reports there. There's no presentations today. Also, there's correspondence from Cox Communications. That's in accordance with their franchise agreement with the city. And similar correspondence from Black Hills Energy as well. Call your attention to the meetings of note. Lots of activities going on. This is a three Tuesday month, too, so you'll have a town hall meeting on September, I don't even know if that's listed on here, 29th is.
August 29th.
Oh, I'm sorry, August, yeah. August 29th. And there will be a presentation from the CDB and Chamber of Commerce on the facilities study that was performed by Hunden. And so I believe there's, prior to that, it will be presented at the County Commission and one other place, I think, but presented here to you and those who watch our town halls. So there'll be some content there. But we'll also do the traditional stuff, show up with any questions, concerns, or comments that folks might have, open mic night, so to speak.
Okay.
All right. I think we're ready for the appropriation ordinance. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2585-2023A.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 2585-2023A.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an ordinance amending the code sections 635 and 6133 in the City of Garden City's Code of Ordinances. And if approved, it would be ordinance number 2960-2023. This relates to alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverage regulations.
Hi, Celine.
Hi, Mayor Commissioners. At the July 6, 2023 city committee meeting, public comment was received asking the governing body to review the Garden City Code of Ordinance related to when liquor stores are able to open. The current City of Garden City Code dictates that retail liquor stores are not permitted to be open on Sundays, Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. This is more restricted than the state statute, which dictates that liquor stores are not permitted to be open on Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. Staff reached out to existing businesses, retail liquor, retail establishments, which are the liquor stores, to their owners as well as chamber members to help understand the level of interest in making changes to more closely resemble state statute. Attached to our, attached to the packet are the full results of the survey. So thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for putting that survey out for us. Total of 249 surveys were received, and listed there below, you'll see the results. Seventy-six percent were interested in allowing Sunday sales, with the exception of Easter. Eighty-eight percent were interested in allowing sales on Memorial Day, eighty-seven on Independence Day, and eighty-eight on Labor Day. The proposed ordinance would make the necessary changes to allow for sales to occur on Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. If the governing body is interested in considering an ordinance to allow retail liquor sales on Sunday, staff turned towards drafting another ordinance specifically for Sunday sales. This action, if approved, would require a 60-day protest period before becoming effective. And if you have questions on that, we'll refer to the existing city of Green Champaign, Illinois. Additionally, the proposed ordinance before you expands the number of city-county locations that can allow for possession, consumption, and sale of alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverage for special events. It should be noted that the changes still require special event requests and proper licensing to come before the governing body for approval, but it would not require a resolution. And in recent discussions with the Kansas Department of Revenue, that Alcohol Beverage Control Division, they are requiring that cities pass a resolution each time a special event comes. So this is our effort to try and avoid having to do that resolution every single time a special event comes through. So for you, the governing body may approve the ordinance as presented. You may not approve the ordinance as presented, or you can provide additional direction. Staff recommends the governing body approve the ordinance as presented, and there is no fiscal doubt. Do you have any questions, or do you need your eye? I don't know if there's anyone in the audience that has anything to comment on.
Do we have one? Yeah, let's see. Jessica. Just please state your name when you come on up.
I'm Jessica Rieken. I'm managing partner at Harry Street Ice House, and I'm here on behalf of my partners, Farnell and Sean Baer, and all of our employees and all of our families. I just have a few quick sentences. While we look forward to being open on Monday holidays in the future, it does take away any holiday time for us liquor store businesses. However, Sundays are presently the only days that liquor stores are closed, and that does neglect us and our employees from any time with our families, not to mention not having a day of rest as most businesses have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any questions that you all have?
Okay, so this all, so let me just make sure. So this, what, so can you go again, with this ordinance, you're not, so you're not asking for the Sundays. So you're asking for, can you just restate it? Just so I make sure I understand.
So there's two changes that are being made.
Okay.
The one change would be to allow for sales on Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day. And then the second part is to allow, I'll let Jimmy explain that one maybe a little bit better.
Sure.
So in order to help the city comply with some of the Kansas Department of Revenue requirements, I think previously, governing body had to take specific action to approve sales for certain locations. So we tried to streamline that a little bit. In the proposed ordinance, you'll find really four locations that are, the whole, kind of stepping back, the whole purpose of the ordinance is consumption public. So you're talking about, you know, regardless of whether or not a owner has a license or somebody has a license to provide alcohol, you're talking about whether or not the person actually drinking it can get criminally charged for their commitment because of the state law that says on any public property, you cannot consume alcohol. So it's kind of a side issue, separate from whether or not that business has a license or not. So that's kind of a little bit confusing because what we require those, the city can exempt certain locations from that general prohibition. And so we're trying to really codify that into this ordinance. That way you don't have to do it on an individual basis. And we've done, and we've done that for a very long time. This just adds a couple more locations. It gives it a little bit more specificity. Previously, if you were not one of the four locations like the restaurant that they're supposed to, government body would have to take specific actions or ordinance. So we added some language in there stating that it can be done by ordinance if you'd like to, you know, saying that people at this property, it's okay for them to drink alcohol, even if it's a public, public property, either by ordinance, either by resolution, or really any other document. So that's from, issued by the governing body. So if that, what that does is it just gives a little bit more flexibility to exempt people from that general, you cannot drink alcohol, consume alcohol on any type of public property. And in doing so, too, the state statute on that is pretty robust. There's a lot of other exceptions, so we brought a lot of those over because we distracted in this, so we take that to consideration. One of the things we added is park lets, even though, you know, that's kind of in the works right now. This is kind of a precursor to that. We certainly didn't want to be approving, you know, alcoholic consumption on a park let if that conflicted with another part of our code. Commissioner, does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And so, like, with special events like tumbleweed or, I know it's coming up. So they would still come and ask, or is that, is the park one of the places that's going to be excluded, or the zoo, or is it?
Yeah, so the zoo falls into the category of, it's more of a special event.
Okay, so they'd need to do that, okay.
So they have a special event permit or CMB or a temporary alcoholic liquor permit. They are qualified. They just have to get that approved by the governing body, where before, it had to be done by ordinance, now it can be done by ordinance, resolution, or a form that you approve.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Jimmy, as a point of clarification, when Independence Day falls on a Sunday and it's observed at a federal level on a Monday, is it the Monday that you're talking about in that instance and not the Sunday? So if, you know, this is, if they don't take up Sunday sales and take up only the ordinance that's presented today with regard to Memorial Day, Independence Day, and Labor Day, and they approve that, when July 4th falls on a Sunday, the Independence Day they're authorizing is not the Sunday. It's the Monday that is the federal observance.
Correct. This would leave the Sunday prohibition in place for us whatever holiday is.
Got you, yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2960-2023.
I'll second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Item 10B, the governing body has asked to consider and approve lease purchase financing for a new software solution for the police department and municipal court. If approved, this would be resolution number 3033-2023. No, yeah, resolution 3033-2023. All right, Emily.
Aye. Police Department in this report have entered into a vendor contract with private technology for public safety software that includes computer aided dispatch, records management system, and municipal court program. The total cost of the contract is $1,678,833. The city will also need to purchase various hardware and equipment to support the new software with a cost of approximately $480,000. But the cost of the hardware, the cost of the project for the five-year term of the contract is $2,158,833. The city solicited proposals from qualified vendors to provide financing for upfront costs for the project, and the first two years of ongoing costs in the amount of $1,560,000. The RFP requested proposals finance the amount over a seven-year term. Financing quotes for seven years were received from the following Clayton Holdings LLC at 4.42% fixed over seven years. We're asking the governing body to, or may approve, lease purchase financing with Clayton Holdings and approve the resolution or may pay from the cash balance and amend the 2023 budget. Our recommendation is to approve the lease purchase financing with Clayton Holdings. And the lease payment will be financed or will be paid from the police department budget and is currently in that line item.
That was an excellent interest rate. I was surprised at the interest rate, to tell you the truth, so. I move that we approve the lease purchase financing from Clayton Holdings LLC and approve the resolution.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 10C, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from I-1 Light Industrial District to I-3 Heavy Industrial District for the property generally located at 107 East Santa Fe Street. If approved, it would be ordinance number 2961-2023.
Good afternoon. Mayor and Commissioner, Jeff Boy on behalf of Garden City Co-op is requesting to rezone the property generally located at 107 East Santa Fe Street from I-2 Light Industrial District to I-3 Heavy Industrial District. The applicant would like the entire property to be the same zoning district and helping the property into compliance. At this time, there are no plans to construct on the property. Maintenance of historic facilities are permitted within I-3 Heavy Industrial District. Res zoning law will conform with ordinance regulations and create a uniform zoning district across the entire lot. Proposed land use is inconsistent with comprehensive plan, which identifies the area as mixed use potential. The governing body may approve the request by criteria in section 27.040, of listed criteria is in this statute. The planning commission recommended approval of the reasoned request at the July 2023 meeting. There are three alternatives in front of you. One, the governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Two, the governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends the governing body adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. Representative from the co-op is here.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance number 2961-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10D, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an ordinance rezoning from R-3 Multi-Family Residential District to I-3 Heavy Industrial District for the property generally located at 209 East Santa Fe Street. And if approved, it would be ordinance number 2962-2023.
Mayor, similar last one. The applicant, Jeff Boy, on behalf of the Garden City Co-op is requesting to rezone the property generally located at 209 East Santa Fe Street from R-3 Multi-Family Residential District to I-3 Heavy Industrial District. The applicant would like the entire property to be the same zoning district and bring the property into compliance. The lot is currently empty, and at this time, there are no plans to construct on the property. However, it will allow the truck driver and lawyer to park. Res zoning lot will conform with the government's zoning regulations and create a uniform zoning district across the entire lot. The proposed land use is inconsistent with comprehensive plan, which identifies the area as a mixed use potential. The governing body may approve the request to the criteria in section 27.040, which is listed in this statute. The planning commission recommended approval of the reasoned request at the July 2023 meeting. There are three alternatives in front of you. The governing body may adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance. The governing body may override the planning commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority. Three, the governing body may return the recommendation to the planning commission with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. The staff recommends the governing body may adopt the, adopt the planning commission's recommendation by approving the proposed ordinance.
Any discussion, any questions?
Mayor, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance number 2962-2023.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item 10E, the governing body has asked to consider and approve an environmental nuisance resolution, and if approved, it would be resolution number 3034-2023. And this first one would remove nuisance conditions at 205 South First Street. We'll read through all of the remaining resolutions on the packet, the resolution number and the address, the abated condition. This first presentation will go over the process.
Okay, Mayor Commissioners, so as I stated, we're looking at 205 South First Street, the environmental nuisance case of couches, concrete, and grello property. Unable to reach the property owners to notice or send out. Your alternative to approve the attached resolution, or two, may not approve the attached resolution. And, Matt, you want to go through each case?
No.
Okay. Do you have a question?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 3034-2023.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, for the remaining ones, we'll identify the resolution number, the address. If anybody has questions on these, we can stop and dig deeper. You might also see if there's anybody that wants to speak to this in the audience. Item F would be, if approved, would be resolution 3035-2023, and would remove nuisance conditions at 614 North 12th Street.
Is there anybody in the audience? Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 3035-2023.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item G, if approved, would be a third, resolution number 3036-2023, and would remove nuisance conditions at 205 South First Street.
Make the motion to approve resolution 3036-2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item H, if approved, would be resolution 3037-2023, and would remove nuisance conditions at 1216 Gibson.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 3037-2023.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item I, if approved, would be resolution 3038-2023, and remove nuisance conditions at 1901 Harding.
Make the motion to approve resolution number 3038-2023.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Trent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business. Item 12A, the governing body has asked to authorize two change orders totaling $218,574 for Southeast Community Park to purchase materials and install non-potable water infrastructure to provide irrigation to Southeast Community Park and adjacent city properties utilizing a non-potable water supply.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. First of all, I want to bring your attention to an error that I found prior to the meeting. The total of the change orders will be $214,134. On September 21st, 2021, the governing body selected SWT Design to provide architectural and landscape design services for Southeast Park Phase 3. The Water Development, the Water Department determined that city-owned water rights purchased in 2006 could provide irrigation water to this site in lieu of potable water. The specific water rights that were changed as part of this project, it was Finney 47, Division 1 and Division 2, and then File Number 5170, Division 1 and Division 2. In late October 2022, the Water Department submitted a change in place of use application with the Division of Water Resources. The application, which was approved, will allow for water usage from the aforementioned water to be fully utilized on city-owned properties, including Southeast Community Park, Garcia Softwood Park, and the city-owned property adjacent and directly east of the utility service center. The total water right appropriation for Finney 47, D1, D2, and File 5170 is 324 acre feet. That equates to about 105.5 million gallons per year. The goal of the city would be to utilize a quantity less than the maximum appropriation to ensure long-term water availability from this water right. The project, if approved, would offset up to 27 million. The project, if approved, would offset up to 27 million gallons of water annually when fully implemented to irrigate Southeast Community Park and Garcia Soccer Complex. Yet, it'd be determined quantity of water may be utilized on city-owned property adjacent utility service if and when that is developed in the future. The total cost of the project, $214,134. The work would be completed as part of this project includes the following changes. A change order in the amount of $126,700 to leave construction. This will include piping adjustments related, needed to bring water from the well, which is located on Spruce Street, south along the western boundary of Southeast Community Park, and then west into the southeast corner of Southeast Community Park. This will also include preparation for electrical service and boring the existing parking lot of Garcia Soccer Complex. So, if you've ever been at Garcia Soccer Park, there's an old wellhead there that's what we're going to be utilizing. The second item, change order for $87,434 to adjust the scope of work to be completed by Site 1 Landscape Supply. This includes pumping station that will boost the water produced from the city irrigation well to the appropriate pressure for use of the irrigation system that's going to be installed in Southeast Community Park. This pump station will also be able to provide irrigation water to Garcia Soccer Complex at a time in the future when that irrigation system is upgraded. This work will also include certified startup calibration and operator training. In addition to the changes described above, Hydro Resources will provide the pumping equipment from the well. This will include the pump, motor, drop pipe, valves, and wiring to the motor. Estimated cost for this work is $24,728.43 and will be procured as a separate service via the city's procurement policy. Information from the three contractors working on this project are attached to the amendment for your reference. As alternatives we offer to the governing body, the governing body may authorize the Water Department to complete the above-mentioned work to utilize city-owned irrigation water rights for Southeast Community Park. The governing body may not approve the work as described above to utilize city-owned irrigation water rights for Southeast Community Park and utilize the city's existing public water supply. And third item, governing body may direct staff to find an alternate solution regarding the use of city-owned irrigation water rights. Staff recommendation, staff recommends governing body authorize the Water Department to complete the work with leave construction, Site 1 Landscape Supply, and Hydro Resources to utilize city-owned water rights to irrigate Southeast Community Park. The project is not budgeted in the water fund. If approved, this project would utilize the cash balance from the water fund to complete this project. The estimated 2024 cash forward balance is $6,292,275, and this project will reduce that projected balance. If approved, the cash forward balance will be reduced by $214,134.
Fred, just to keep track of the math, there's two things listed, two numbers listed, but then there's this in addition. So, are there three things being considered by the commission today? Item 1, item 2, and the thing below item 2 that doesn't have a number?
The, the third item we've considered as, as a maintenance.
That's being done in-house?
Through our, through our typical water operating.
Okay, so the commission isn't being asked to consider that. It's within the threshold to be approved within, within city staff. Okay.
We just wanted to be aware of the full scope.
All right.
Gotcha.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the Water Department to complete the, the work that was mentioned and utilize city-owned irrigation water rights for the Southeast Community Park.
Second.
Right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item B, 10, I'm sorry, 12B, the governing body is asked to consider the application for a plumbing and general contractor Class A license for Fast Eddie's Construction and Repair LLC. Trent.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners, for your consideration today, this is the licensing for Fast Eddie's Contractor License, Class A, and Home Contractor License. To give you a little background of why we're here and why we need this item, on December 7th, 2022, Eddie Correa, EBA, Fast Eddie's Construction and Repair LLC submitted an application for renewed plumbing and general contractor Class A license. There's a fee associated with both types of licenses which were not paid until March 17th of 2023. On January 30th, 2023, staff received a written complaint regarding Mr. Korea in February. Staff asked us for advice in regards to the complaint, which we did five days later. After extensive internal discussions with the city attorney's office, staff proceeded with the licensing request of Mr. Korea due to the subvention of the allegations and how the existing code is written. At March 21st, 2023, the commission meeting his request was pulled off again as staff had been made aware of pending litigation that was not properly disclosed in the application. The application asked applicants to attach to list the debts outstanding and payable to the subcontractors who have resulted in liens, encumbrances, or lawsuits filed against your company during the past year, and to attach over debts of new lawsuits engaged in and with property owners or service lender or performance by the company during the past year. On March 30th, 2023, staff reached out to Mr. Korea regarding requesting required information. Staff followed up with a formal letter on the May 7th, 2023, requesting the completed application he provided before the request could go before the governing body's consideration. On August 4th, 2023, another written complaint was received regarding Mr. Korea indicating he was continued, he has continued to perform work without proper license in regard in city and county. On August 8th, 2023, Mr. Korea via his representative provided staff with two lawsuits from 2022 that have been filed. Staff is aware of two additional cases that have been filed in 2023. It should be noted that in staff's review of also the application, no contractor indicated that were involved in litigation. As practice, staff is not complete a litigation search when applications are received. Additionally, pending condition, we would not inherently disqualify contractor from being licensed where other staff would hold the application from the consent agenda and place it under new business for consideration separately. Alternatives before you today, number one, the governing body may approve the general contractor Class A and plumbing license for Fast Eddie's Contracting LLC. Number two, the governing body may deny the contractor, general contractor Class A, one license for Fast Eddie's Contracting LLC. Number three, the governing body may provide alternative direction. Staff has no recommendation at this time. There's one pistol note attached within the document you have or the letters of response as well as complaints that we received. And if desired by anybody, there may be some in the audience that may want to comment on this item. If you have any questions.
Okay, we do have somebody who has indicated they'd like to come up and state your name.
Well, Commissioner, City Mayor, my name is Chris Martinez. We did file a complaint as well regarding to Fast Eddie. He has, so to speak, misrepresented himself as being a legitimate and compliant contractor within the city of Garden City. We reached out to him to do some work. We had a water spigot bust in our home, which was in our basement, so we contacted him to do some work. Eddie is a friend of mine, which, you know, I like to mean that he's a local businessman. I wanted to help support locally and, you know, maybe, maybe ensure that his business is thriving. Well, unfortunately, we were on the other side of the stick on that one because he treated us like his other customers that he engaged in ill practices with. We gave him a deposit, a very large deposit of over $12,000. He did not complete the work. We were left on the hook to finish doing the work and, you know, gave him the work done by another licensed contractor, which is one who kind of opened our eyes to a lot of the false practices or mispractices that Eddie's been doing and deceiving a lot of residents here in Garden City area. To initialize and to give this gentleman a license is going to be very harmful to the community where he has done practices where he takes money, does not complete work from start. He disappears. You get in contact with him. It's no communication. We find it hard to, we are filing a claim with the Kansas Attorney General because this is, if he's allowed to continue to do this here in the city of Garden City, we are hurting a lot of residents. A lot of residents are paying a lot of these expenses out of pocket. So, he's, if he's running off of their money, they're making hardships on families that are literally struggling, you know, the economic times of this present moment are only gaining more strings. So, for him to be allowed to continue this practice is a disservice to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Mayor?
Go ahead. No, you're good.
Mayor, I make a motion that we deny the general contractor Class A and plumbing license for Fast Eddie's Contracting LLC.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Okay, just so I can make a comment on this being a possible civil issue, not being involved as a city. I don't know what, I guess we have to work through that with staff, with, with legal and everything about not having this being reflected on the city as to the complaints with the clients and the contractor. I think we just, we just are responsible for the application approval. And so, I think all the discussion of the other things around it should be dealt with civil, in a civil court. But that's just my comment on that, so.
The other thing I was just gonna say is, is practicing and representing if you are licensed when you aren't also is a, an issue that, I don't know if there's fees or penalties for that, or, so, yeah, how that goes, so.
Do you want to say something?
I was just going to say that, not at this particular time, but we're working on what that looks like. We're working, the city attorney's office is working on helping staff think about what other things could come up and how to draft those in the particular licensing rules and regulations related to applications.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, thank you.
Item C is the consent agenda. If there aren't any that you'd like to pull off and consider separately, it would be C-1 through 7.
Yeah, I move that we approve consent agenda items C-1 through 7.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up is Commission Reports. And Commissioner Dick, you get to go first again.
203. I'll be, I'll be really brief, though. Congratulations, Amy, on her new position, taking over for the role that Jamie Stewart had. Excited to see you do that and continue to have great work with communications. So, good, good there. Thanks, Danielle, and NDS and everybody for the pre-meeting. Again, we were talking about, we're proud about being partners and working with our other entities. These are the things that actually, it's easy to, it's easy to say you work together when everything's going fine and you don't have any issues. I mean, the thing that actually is when you work together is when you have issues, working together to get them resolved. So, I know it's a lot of work and going back and forth and trying to get that all done, but thank you for all the time that you put into that. So, it's very much appreciated. I'm gonna steal some of Commissioner Sessna's thunder by saying, remember, school's back in session starting today. There are a lot of kids out. It seems like our enrollment is up a lot, so there'll probably be new kids walking around that might not be aware of crossings and all that stuff. So, just really keep in mind all the kids out and about, support them any way you can, club sports, athletic sports and all that stuff. And then finally, we're only like four commission meetings away from being already the voting, so just start right now. November 7th is when elections are. Put that under your calendar now so that you don't forget. So, that's all I have to say.
Great. Commissioner Unruh.
So, I did want to also congratulate Amy. It's exciting to have, I know that rule, where you don't realize it, when it, when it's not there, you realize it, and then when it is there, you kind of count on it. And I really appreciate all of the text messages that have been, I mean, I cannot believe how many times I've got, you know, severe, which I'm having a hard time believing, so severe weather threats that this is Western Kansas, but I really appreciate all the work you do and I, it's one of the few things I actually check on Facebook, so thank you for that. And your, and your team, I know it's, I know it's a group effort. I also appreciate the pre-meeting, and I know that what I'm hoping is comes out of this is better communication. And I know there's been a lot of working through, you know, sometimes the issue is not the issue, but, but the chance to have communication, opportunities to talk. I do appreciate the county attorney coming today and, you know, giving us input. I think that's really great insight. I would love to see county commissioners come and also be a part of this. It's an important discussion. And, you know, as Commissioner Dick talked about, partnerships work only when you're willing to really discuss during the times when we really need to get things done. And, you know, with the growth in Garden City, you know, a lot of cities, I don't want us to take that for granted, and I know a lot of cities would love to have what we have going on. And, you know, when you're around Southwest Kansas, they're always pointing to, well, what's new in Garden City? I wish I knew more. I mean, I'm grateful for some of the Facebook posts that keep you up to date, but I never know until after that everybody else knows, so. The other thing I want to say is, Dr. Mangus, I mean, what an incredible distinguished career, I mean, in making Garden City your home for all these years and doing all that really incredible work. I know it's a lot and, you know, sometimes there's the unsung heroes, you don't see them a lot, especially if they're really good, they're so busy. And if you do have to see them, you want them to be really good and to be there. But I really appreciate, you know, all that's going on that way. I did want to comment, I did have a resident who stopped by my home and showed me a letter about some weeds and some, some stuff that's out behind the dumpsters. And I know that sometimes, even if the dumpster's on your side of the alley, I mean, other people can do that. He was a little bit frustrated because he reached out to NDS and said that it was probably part of his neighbors. Well, I guess, then, so he thinks somebody from NDS go to his neighbor and talk to them, and then his neighbor came and was very upset with him. So, I explained to them that we would find some way to help him, you know, in the neighborhood and to make sure that didn't happen. But again, you know, it's, it's, again, this is, we all live together in the neighborhood. And I know with the alleys, the way they are with the mud and all of that stuff, I mean, getting the trash trucks through, I'm just glad that they empty at least once a week. And so, it's been really, I think we take a lot of those things for granted, but I know that with our neighbors, to be kind, we want to one another and help one another out. We have some incredible people in our neighborhood that, I mean, have helped us out from time to time. And so, sometimes it's your, it's your chance to pay it forward and to step up. So, with that, I just want to appreciate all that's going on in the city. I really am so excited about, a lot of happening is road construction. I avoid that as much as possible, but I really appreciate all that's going on in the city and all the hard work behind all that's happening.
Commissioner Sessna.
Yeah, just to reiterate, congratulations to all of the new staff that we've hired for the city. It helps our entire community. I'm just lumping everybody together instead of saying. Yes, school has started today. It was a half-day orientation for students in kindergarten through fifth grade, seventh graders, ninth and 10th grade students, as well as students new to the district. Just be mindful of the school zones. I know the Garden City Police Department has been putting out a lot of messages about school zone safety. Just remember to slow down to 20 miles an hour. Just be mindful of the students walking to and from school. I noticed today as I was visiting a number of the schools this morning before they started, parents were walking kids and kids were on bikes. So, just be, just be really mindful of students walking to school. Also, be mindful of the crossing guards in our community as they're trying to get those students across those heavier traffic intersections in our community. And then the school buses, when they're stopped with the red lights going, please stop on both sides. Students are getting on and off of those school buses. I know, I'm doing a safety presentation right now, but just trying to get our students to and from school in a safe manner, and that's what we're all about. Also, I wanted to congratulate Garden City as a whole. We won the 2023 Best Overnight City Award for the great race, great turnout, awesome automobiles, and downtown looked fabulous. And what a great award for a national race. We've got another race coming up with motorcycles in September, so come on out and, and enjoy that event. I think that'll be on September 16th, if I'm correct.
It's during Fall Fest.
Yep. Okay. But another great event to come out and celebrate. Southwest Kansas Pro-Am's underway, so another great event highlighting our community. And then tomorrow is the big lemonade stand battle between law enforcement and the firefighters and EMS. So come on out and enjoy some lemonade and visit our first responders as they battle out the lemonade stand war in our community. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Ortiz.
I'll keep it short, try. Just echo what everybody else said. Amazingly, no one mentioned the skate park, but it looks great. There's, it's coming along. There's, there's green turf that's going down now, so I look forward to doing, getting together and doing the grand opening for that. So that looks really good. Partnerships and development, that's, that's huge of what Commissioner Unruh had spoke about. You know, we just had a meeting this morning. It just speaks towards the future of Garden City. There is a lot going on. There's a lot of development. There's new people moving in. I kind of, I met a guy last week, and they're looking at developing here. So it's confidential right now, can't give names or what, where it's at, but I'm sure there's just a lot of things that are gonna go on in Garden City here in the near future. So just like development up there with Kohl's, Dream First Bank Development, that's, that's huge as well. So there's a lot of things that are gonna be coming online, and we just want to be here for supporting them. Staff does an amazing job to, to reach out and get them what they need to get done and open and smooth transition for everyone, for everyone in the community. So that's just amazing to me. You know, the partnership, the workmanship with the city and developers and new people coming in. So, yeah, also happy first day for school in Garden City. I don't want to spend too much time, but KH, that's my kid's alma mater. They're, they're playing football, and my wife's coaching volleyball, so good luck to them this year. Also, two weeks ago, Utilities was in, and I forgot to, or I didn't, I just didn't put in a memo, but Red was here, and Black Hills does an awesome job with supporting the community. I mean, they, he's been out, or his workers have been out to just volunteer if you need, you know, assistance with meals or handing out work. It's, their, their team is just amazing. So I'd just like to get that on record for, for Red, extend that to his workers on a great job that they do volunteering throughout the community. So with that, I think that's it. Thank you.
All right. I attended the Sales Tax Oversight Committee meeting last week, and we heard an update about the third, the third fire department. And so we're excited to hear about that process and, and be up to date on some of the changes that have been made and kind of getting closer and closer to that guaranteed maximum pricing. So exciting project and glad to see it moving. Yes, congratulations to Yemi. It's just, I love it when we have employees that move up within the organization. I think it's amazing to see that talent that we have and knowing, you know, that we're doing a good job training and, and helping them to, you know, just move up and, and move up into those leadership roles. And so congratulations to you for that. I had a chance, I was driving down Eighth Street, and I saw the art installation. The, it really looks great. And so I know that we're looking into doing some sort of a celebration about that, but it, it really does pop on that street, and I was just very pleased with how it all turned out. So that is all I have. And so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.